This presentation is to provide the board with an update on Standards Reference Grading, or SRG. This presentation is for the board's information.
We're glad to have you here. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm Christy O'Toole. I'm the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and I'm here with Holly Ingram today, and she'll be helping give you an update. Holly is one of our secondary math specialists. So, we're really wanting to just share with you today how things are going, and really start also addressing some of the things that we've been doing as we problem solve around our implementation. So, we wanted to start your update just by giving you a quick look at how things are going at the elementary level. And so, you're going to see a video from Cloud Elementary where the teachers are touching base and telling us how things are going, and we've recently shared this with our elementary folks.
What do we know about the words? They are?
A, E, W.
Standards Reference Grading was a big shift in learning here at Cloud Elementary this year. We went slow to go fast so that we could understand what it was we were doing so that we could be doing it well.
The first semester has been a learning curve, for sure. I kind of like to think of it as a crock pot and not a microwave. I know eventually it will all come together, but it's slow to grow.
In the beginning, when I would show the targets to my students, I could tell that they were a little confused. It was a lot to take in, but now they seem to understand it. So, I can say, "This is our target. This is where I want you to be," and they all know that if they aren't there now, that they're going to get there at the end of the school year. That's the eventual goal.
A period.
A question mark.
The teachers here at Cloud have been committed. It was very quickly that they determined that this was the right way to go, even if they weren't ready yet to go there. And so, they worked really hard to fully understand the whole process of planning, and teaching, and assessing, and grading.
One thing I hear is that it makes teaching so much more intentional, and a narrowed focus makes us feel like our goals are attainable. We're seeing growth in the students, and success breeds success. So, seeing the ball rolling in the right direction feels good. And that one of the things that I've heard teachers say before is that our grading has never felt right, and now it feels better.
We know specifically what students know, each individual skill, so we can use that information to either reteach a skill or include it in a small group teaching activity that we do.
It's better because it does, it focuses on specific things, and it helps you.
For math, it didn't matter what we were doing. If it was like area and perimeter, and then multiplication, division, it would all just be a math grade. But now, it is divided by targets, specifically by the standards. So, parents and students can know, like, oh, they get division. They can do this part of division really well, but they may not understand this part of division well.
Turn and tell the person next to you what is not okay.
My teacher explained it as, if you get a one, it's fine at the beginning of the year, because she knows that you need help on something. And I like it better because I also get to know what I need help on.
Initially, they're always like, "I don't want a one." No one wants a one. And so, it's been difficult in the beginning to get them to accept that a one is okay in the beginning. And they're also advocating for themselves. I will have kids now, like, in a writing activity, be like, "Look, I wrote a simile," or we'll read something, and they'll point it out.
You, what, are, earth.
I think what's gone really well is SRGs and planning. I think we're really intentional with how we're planning and what standards we're incorporating into our lessons, what standards we're making our big rocks, and that has led for our teaching to be more intentional.
We've been able to spend significant amount of time during our professional learning and our team times to really dive in and understand the standards, and to apply the planning documents, and have a lot of grace with each other as we are collaboratively planning. And one of the things that we've seen is that a lot of the targets are repetitive. So, as we get more comfortable with them, we're like, "Oh, there's that target again. We feel good about this one."
Next semester is really going to go smoothly because we now have a full understanding of what it means to be at a three, or a two, or a one, and we have a good understanding of what the foundational targets are, as well as what our goal is that we're working for.
One of the things I'm looking the most forward to is the growth that the students have made. We knew where they started, and the teachers are working so hard, and the kids are working so hard. I'm looking forward to seeing how it ends for them, and that screener data, state assessment data, all the data starts correlating, and that it all means the same thing. I'm looking forward to that. And then, the teacher efficacy of them looking at it and knowing what they're doing and feeling good about it.
It's also really fun to hear the kids talk. When I ask them, "What do you like about Standards Reference Grading?", I like that they can tell me, "I know what my goal is. I know where I am now, and I know what I need to do to get there." So, that's been really great, having those conversations with the kids, too.
So, one of the things that we wanted to talk about tonight was that we know that if K-12, from our research, that it would take 15,000 hours to teach all of our standards well. And we know, at best, we have 9,000, and that's another reason why it's so important that our kids are at school consistently, and that that's one of our targets as a district. Because we, we need to use all of those hours, and we need to use all of those minutes as best we can, and so, that's one of the reasons we are prioritizing our standards. It's not that we're not teaching all of them. We teach all our standards, but we want to spend the most time on the ones that are critical and the ones that we agree, K-12. These are the ones the kids need to have so that we can move them forward. So, before our year started, we did have identified, for example, at the kindergarten level, 25 standards to target for, and prioritize, which means that we were, we also ask our teachers to assess and report on those targets. We did start that work before the year started. We started looking at a total of 41 targets. And so, prior to this year, of the targets, we already narrowed down to 25. And it is very difficult to have a set of standards that you know kids need to know, and then start to say, "These are the ones that are the most important." So, we did narrow to 25, and then at every year, this is not a new process for our district, but every year, we have groups of teachers come in, and they look at our current curriculum, and they evaluate the instructional unit guides and all of those things. So, we're starting that process now. Some of our groups started in January, and as they're doing that, they're also looking at the number of targets and deciding which ones do we need to probably prioritize even more. So, that is something that we're looking at. Another thing that we've been working on this year as we implement SRG is we started the year with some professional learning that we knew was important for teachers to have, and as the year went on, when we were getting feedback about the time that was needed, we did make those required. So, we do know that there have been eight required PDs that were implemented that will continue to be implemented through the rest of this year. And we're also looking at what we're going to do next year to continue our professional learning on Standards Reference Grading. Another thing that we've been working on is providing, from our feedback, providing sessions for professional learning after school for ELA planning. Those sessions have been well attended. They started at the beginning of the year, and they also are going to the end of the year. There are still sessions that people can attend. And then, we've also, from feedback, added some Otis sessions, providing some additional professional learning for teachers that wanted to learn more about Otis. That was a request that we had. One of the other things that we struggled with at the beginning of the year with Otis was the folders, well, not having the folders. So, when teachers went into their Otis environment, their Otis platform, they would see a long list of assessments, and they weren't able to organize them. And so, in January, they are now, or they fixed that, and so, now we can organize those. Yes. So, another thing that we have been working on is being able to provide teachers a way to assign multiple targets at once in Otis, and so, that has also been, we've gotten some positive feedback from that. So, we are continuing to problem solve, and we're continuing to listen to feedback. And one of the things that we wanted to talk a little bit about was, we do have some continued challenges with our program with Otis. For example, it takes time to learn how to navigate a new system. That's one of the reasons that we're offering additional professional learning, is to ask questions and have people have time to do that. The other thing that we're kind of struggling with is we have computers in some of our buildings for our teachers that are, it just takes a while for the Otis system to load, but we're working on that. We're working on, we think that when those new, those new computers are in place, that it will be better. One of the things that we are still working on, and I'm not sure if we're going to be able to solve this this year, but teachers don't have the ability to preview or print a progress report. We have people in the building that can do that for them, but at this point in time, that's, that's a frustration that we hear quite often. Then, we are, our district, we have Synergy, and Microsoft Teams is something that we're starting to bring in. And Otis, right now, we're still working through how to make those two systems talk to each other. The company is very responsive to concerns. It just, it takes time. So, we're still problem solving around those things, and we'll continue to do that. So, just to also let you know where we're going next with Standards Reference Grading, we are continuing to prioritize our standards and look at the targets. We're also, next year, our professional learning will, will spend more time on learning intention examples and the success criteria for students. And what I mean by that, I'll show you a quick example. This is an example of how a teacher is sharing with her students. The learning intention is, that's your target, and it's in kid-friendly terms, so the students know that they can add numbers to 10 fluently. And then, below that is really being very clear with students about what the success criteria looks like, so that students know, "This is exactly what I need to do in order to meet that standard." This is something that we're already doing, but we'll have a little bit more of a focus on that as we continue our professional learning.
The timeline for implementation of Standards Reference Grading was updated in November of 2019. Middle schools will begin implementation during the 2020 and 2021 school year for sixth grade. Progress reports will reflect the new grading system for students in sixth grade during this first year of implementation. Progress reports will reflect the new grading system for students in seventh and eighth grade in the 2021, 2022 school year. High school will begin implementing the new grading system during the 2022, 2023 school year in entry-level high school courses. Our next video highlights some of our middle school teachers who have been highlighting, using proficiency scales in their classroom during this school year.
Work with that shoulder partner, somebody close to you. Use your equation. How can you find how many hours she worked?
This is the first year that I've piloted scales. I actually moved to a new building this year, too, a new curriculum, new everything. So, with the scales, I was able to just jump right into a brand-new, brand-new set of things to do.
I teach interrelated language arts, and this is my first year piloting scales, and it has been one of my biggest successes for this school year.
Being the first year piloting, I will tell you that I was, it was very overwhelming initially with the grading. Grading their assignments has gotten a lot easier in terms of, I'm not counting questions. I'm not looking for, "How many do you have right or wrong?" I'm looking for conceptual understanding.
So far, it has gone pretty well. Where students are still kind of getting what they're used to, so they're kind of, I'm more weaning them into it. So, as full implementation is added on year by year, they're prepared for it, instead of it kind of being just a shock right there, and they have to start right away. Remember, on this SRG, a three is our target. A three is what you're aiming for. It's changed my planning process a lot because instead of just looking at all the different things that students can know, I can now specifically target really what is the key concept or the core concepts that students really need to understand to be able to achieve success.
We've always planned using our instructional unit guides, the state standards, but with the scales, we've become more intentional in our lesson selections and refining our instruction.
This gives me a sense of direction. It helps me an awful lot with just having planning. It felt like I was just picking and choosing what I was doing because we don't have a set special education curriculum. So, this gives me a lot more direction in staying in line with what everybody else is doing in the other classrooms as well.
I don't have to worry about what I'm going to teach anymore. It's all right there in the scales. I can unpack it. Not only do I know what I'm teaching, but the foundational skills that build up to that. So, now I just get to worry about how to teach. So, I get to do the fun stuff.
My students were very confused initially because it's incredibly new for our eighth graders. They haven't had experience with this yet, but they've really taken to it. It just takes that transitional period for them.
With anything, they were hesitant at first. They're really hardwired to want a letter grade and a percentage grade, but they've really come around, and we've been able to have some good conversation about what a three means, or what can I do to get to that three? So, with any, with anything, it's going to take some time, but they're, they're flexible.
I'll pull up the scales on the board, and I really want to talk with them on it. I want them to see what's being asked, so they kind of get a full understanding. And same thing with parents, too, sending the scales home to parents, so they can look at it and understand, you know, this is how the district's moving, this is what is going to be asked. You know, we encourage you to talk with your students.
My students, they really kind of latched on to it a lot. They understand what they need to know a lot better because I break down the scales as best as I can. I use this student-friendly language when I break them down, so the students understand exactly what they need. And then, you have students that, when they don't meet the goal or have a score that they really like, they can, they look over, and they look at my wall over here, and they go, "Uh, can I redo this?"
They know what the three is, and if I didn't get to a three, what could I do on a level two? And so, we always look at why they're at the three and why they're at the two, and what that means. Tried to take away the verbiage of, "You got an A," or "You got a B," but more of, "You hit the target. You did what you were supposed to be able to do."
There are some things I turn in, and I tell them, "I'm looking at this to see where you are. I'm looking at this and holding you accountable for these learning processes." And it's become less of the, "Is this for a grade? And, okay, I'm going to do this," and participate in those learning opportunities, because everything builds on itself.
So, your main job tomorrow, based off our standard, is going to be to analyze the development and characteristics of Athens and Sparta. It is really helpful with assessing students because it allows me to get a better grasp on what they do understand and where they're struggling, and then I can pinpoint exactly where maybe the gaps are showing up. That way, I can target them a little bit more, provide them a little bit more helper material, so that they can be successful and on grade level with everybody else.
With the scales, I've been able to give my kids frequent informal assessments, so I know where they are as we're learning, not just at the end of, of a topic or a unit. So, they get the feedback as we work, and, and I get the feedback, too, so I can assess how they're doing, and if I need to change what we're, what we're teaching, so they can really master it and get to that level three.
Grading is actually a little bit, it seems more simplified. So, they really know exactly what it is. I have it posted, so they can look, and I also give them direct feedback right there. Some things they do really well, and other things they don't do as well. So, I'm able to really hone in on what I need to work on, or maybe what I need to teach a little differently.
It makes it very clear for myself and for students, and I've been able to have some quality conversations with classes who were not pleased with where their performance was, to have that conversation, to say, "This is what you can improve on. These are the areas that I'm not seeing that you have full understanding and mastery in."
It's assessing you on us, on how well you write a summary over our text, okay? Change is not easy. It's a big change in thought process. Give as much feedback to the students as possible. I think they appreciate that, and they also, they also appreciate the fact that they understand how you're grading them.
You need to be very open to the idea, and it is hard. Work with your coaches. My data coach here at Chris and McCullough Academy has been vital.
My sixth-grade team that I work with has been so helpful. Without a team, I think that this would have been a floundering of a year, so definitely get yourself a good team that you can work with, and, and I've been super grateful that they've been along with a ride with me.
This is absolutely a positive transition. It is a mindset shift that has changed my grading practices, that has changed my instruction, all for the positive. And I feel that I'm a far better teacher for using scales in my instruction.
Scales has been one of the two big things that's changed the way I teach. I'm so much more comfortable with our curriculum now and with having those conversations with my students, and I'm just grateful that I gave it a shot. It has kinks, but we'll work them out, and, and I think it's going to be really powerful with our kids. There you go.
So, as we think about next year for the sixth-grade implementation, what exactly will this look like? So, our academic sixth-grade courses will be using scales and their instruction, planning, and grading. Intervention and consortium courses will have identified course expectations and guidelines, and then the sixth-grade progress reports will display the learning targets. Those intervention and consortium courses will be just marked as a pass/fail based on that identified criteria, since they don't have defined state standards. Next, you should have in your packet an example of what that sixth-grade report card looks like. Parents can expect to see an overall grade, and then scores based on the individual targets for each course. In seventh and eighth grade next year, those courses will be using the scales for their instruction and planning. They, their progress report will not display the standards in the grading, overall course grade. So, the teachers have the option to use the standards-based grade book, but the overall report card will still just report an overall grade for the class. The intervention and consortium classes will begin using those same expectations and course guideline documents, and then you have an example of a seventh and eighth-grade progress report, which will look like our traditional progress report right now. This school year, we have begun rolling out professional development for our middle school secondary teachers. There's been required building professional learning started this school year to support the precursor for our teachers in the planning with scales, preparing for the grading in that. Teacher support documents are already in process. Some are being posted as we speak, and all of them will be available for teachers by June 5th. They got a preview of the Synergy grading system at our February in-service, and will receive full training in August. And then, leadership retreat training with Tammy Helfelbauer in June for our district principals and identified leaders as well. The communication toolkit has been developed to support our schools and their communication with families. These highlight how grades and Standards Reference Grading convert to a letter grade, the employability targets, and other frequently asked questions. So, due to numerous questions around secondary, we've moved up our communication timeline with parents and the community, and have four upcoming parent Q&amp;A sessions that will focus around these four questions, as well as others that we gather between now and then. These will begin happening in April.
Please, are, do you have any questions?
Yes, we do have some questions. Julie?
Okay. Just so that I understand this a little bit better. You said you started out the year with 41 targets, and I think you kind of listened to teachers, got feedback, listened to teachers, and made the modification to focus on 25 of those.
We started the year with 25.
Oh, okay.
Each grade level, Kinder through fifth, has quite a few targets available, and each, each grade level started with a smaller number.
Okay, so...
So, we're at 25, yes.
So, 25 for each grade level?
Julie, what I think she's asking you is, we started out with 25, then we listened to feedback, then we bumped that 25 down to...
No, we are...
How many did you, did you, when we listened the first time, and we went down to how many?
Five.
We went to five, but we, but we need to be at 25, so we went back to...
We're still, so we, we bumped it down and said, at the beginning of the year, five, and then we added some, and now by the end of the year, we are, we are wanting teachers to assess all, and make sure students have all 25 assessed. But next year, we're looking at, is 25 needing to go down?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So, does that, so does that mean that then on the report cards, that like when you went, bumped down to five, that only those five were all that was assessed on their, on the, on a kid's report card?
For the first quarter and just ELA, because we did a, we, on the report card, it has ELA, math, science, social studies, and all the fine arts.
Got it. So, we're just talking about ELA here?
Yes, that's just one example.
Okay. So, did that happen in the other subjects also that, that you...
Yes.
Cut down and targeted? So, then, so then, the report cards then would have just reflected the ones that they were targeting?
Correct.
The modified version. Okay. So, now, when you go then to sixth-grade implementation next year, are you going to start with a modified number, knowing that it was challenging at the elementary level, or...
I think the goal is all, is always to start with something manageable, and it's just, it's really difficult to know what that number is, and so, that's something that we're going to have to continue to get feedback and to problem solve, because even where we have, you know, on one hand, that's too many, on the other hand, we also have feedback that it's not enough.
And, I, you know, I know you're in contact with Kim, and, you know, she gave her feedback tonight. What are, I hear when I talk to teachers, you know, the concerns about, everybody thinks it's a good thing, you know? Everybody thinks in the, in the end, that it's a good thing, but they're having challenges with getting it implemented. So, kind of, how does that work for you guys as far as your process of being able to get that feedback? And, you know, it's, it seems like you're doing, trying to do a lot of things to help with that, you know? This, this Otis dilemma is one of the ones I've heard about a lot, one of the ones Kim mentioned. Seems like you're, you're working at trying to solve some of that stuff, but just how does that feedback loop work for you guys as far as how to, how to get the information about what help is needed?
Right. We get a lot of feedback from, we get feedback from teachers, from coaches, from our, especially from the groups that we invite in to work on things. We have quite a few task force teams that meet. You know, right now, we have groups that are meeting almost every night for different things to get this implemented and problem solve around things. And so, we also talk regularly to Kim and Gabe, and I, I think what we do is we continue to listen and try to make things better and problem solve.
Just like on your, just like on your films, you know? People think it's a great thing, and they acknowledge that change is hard, but it is. It's just one of those growing pains, I think, for, for a lot of people. So, thank, thank you for your, thank you for listening, and thank you for your hard work.
Ron?
Yes. I was just wanting to find out, so on one of the pages, you have the math checklist, and, well, both are math, but looks pretty objective there. And so, kind of bouncing off what Julie was saying, actually, what Kim was saying, is there's some subjectivity going on. So, is there going to be some consistency in particular to middle school, the upper grades, and in particular, high school? So, will, will it be pretty objective, or will there be some subjectivity where teachers might not be so consistent with their grading?
I think it come, I think that will get better with time.
Okay.
I think as people get, as they get to know the scales better, as we get to know, as our assessments get better, as we are working together to share resources, it'll, it will eventually, we'll just get better each year.
Okay. And are there any other schools, like around our size, that we're able to maybe look at? And, I mean, I know we're getting information from our own teachers and stuff like that, but I mean, what about other schools around, like maybe, I don't know, Denver, Tulsa? but I mean, what about other schools around, like maybe, I don't know, Denver, Tulsa, you know, just thinking of something like that?
We do actually talk quite a bit to Noel in Des Moines.
Okay.
But we do talk to other districts, and we are often looking at many districts to see what they're doing. One of the task force we have right now is the homework task force, and so we're currently reaching out to, I think we're reaching out to about 10 different districts to find out what are they doing, how did it go, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
I know Ron and Julie have both kind of breached on this question, but I'm going to ask it a little more bluntly. That's the way I am. If you watch this video in a week, you're going to hear somebody say, "We hate SRG." And then, when you watch this presentation, you're going to see, "Yeah, there's some problems with it, but we're learning it and we're okay with it." And I'll be honest with you, I've gotten some phone calls from teachers, and it was actually about an issue that somehow they got it wrong, but it's okay. I'm glad they called me, and the SRG happened to come up with this. It was totally unsolicited, and they all liked it. So, I'm sitting here going, "What's the percentage of like to dislike in reality?" And, because, you know, if we poll five people tomorrow, and those five people hate it, then we ought to throw it away, which is wrong. If we poll, have we polled every teacher in the district on SRG that's talking, using SRG today? Would be one of my first questions. And the second question is, is what data are we listening to when we hear about problems with SRG? And I'm so confused right now, sitting here, because I get the fact that it doesn't talk to Synergy, which is, I don't understand, and I'm not going to understand. But where are we really at with like to dislike? Because we saw these teachers today, and they were, I think they were very honest. They said, "Hey, I got some problems with it, but I worked through it, the kids worked through it, we figured it out, and we jumped on it, and we're good to go." You know, and we heard something else that was opposite. So, can you give me a spectrum? I mean, you may not be able to, and if you can't, just say so, and it won't hurt my feelings.
Dr. Thompson? Yes. With any change, what I heard them say was mind shift change. This is a whole culture shift, different way of thinking, different way of grading, different way of planning from what we've ever done before. And anytime you have something like that, you're going to have bumps, bruises, scratches, and scrapes. But the whole point of this is, is we have to rally together, because it's showing that it's impacting our school and our children in a positive way, and that's what we're all here for. So, what I'm going to say is, is we have to rally together to solve the bumps, the bruises, the things that we need to do, so that we can make sure that we are not dragging, pulling. It's going to be uncomfortable, it's not going to be pleasant, it's not for us either. We had to learn, scrape at the district level, to learn what this is, and it's going to take all of us working together. So, what I will say is that, yes, there are people who probably hate it, but they think it's good for kids. I think there are people that like it, because it helps them, it makes them better, and I bet you there are, I mean, so any, along the whole spectrum of everything that you just said, you're going to find somebody or a group of people. But what I would hope that we would do is that we would rally together and that we would continue to listen to our parents, our students, our teachers, our principals, our union. I would hope that we would listen to what they're saying, and then we come together as a unit, and we would problem solve, so that we get in a good, sweet spot. And then, we, once we get this, and over time, it will get better. It's just with like anything, riding a bike, doing anything that you do every day, once you get good at it, then it becomes second nature to you. But during the time when you're learning it, just like a bike, you fall off, you get scrapes, you don't want to ride, you get mad, you do all these things, but we got to hold ourselves together and push through, because it will make a difference for kids. So, I just think, I understand, I listen, but we've got to be able to kind of work together on this, so that we can do what's right for kids and the teachers, because it takes all of us in order to get this done. Ben?
So, I look at the progress report, and I see fractional, like a 2.5, like a 3.5. Is that going to be part of the normal standard to report, like half proficiency on some, on a report like this?
Yes, and what is not on that progress report that we're still working on is putting the codes at the top, so that you can see what each of those means.
Okay.
So, that's coming.
I obviously have heard lots, like all of us has, have about this, but what I am consistently hearing from people, even though they've really struggled with this, is I'm consistently hearing that this is raising the level of instruction. I may have been teaching something, but I was teaching it at a lower level, and now I know I have to raise that, which that's the right thing, obviously, for kids. If we can get them on true grade level, then when those major assessments come, it becomes easier for them. The other thing I'm consistently hearing is that they really believe it's good for kids, but it's just been a struggle, you know? And we are now three-fourths the way through our school year, and I'm hearing people sort of breathe and feel like maybe they're moving, but it's still a struggle. I mean, I think that's something we have to admit. This has been difficult. I do think they also say it's making this way more transparent for parents, for teachers, and for students. They understand what they're supposed to learn and how they can get better at it, and they haven't always known how to do that as a child in a classroom. They just got it, and then if they got a B, they thought, "Well, what did I need to do to get an A?" or vice versa. Some of the concerns that I've been hearing pretty consistently also are on the scales, and how do we get those scales? The work that says, you know, "Here's the 1, 2, 3, 4." You've done that, but then they have to kind of put it into kid language and put it in their classroom. And I was at the in-service day in February, and in a session where they were working on scales, and we had a lot of teachers in that room that weren't quite sure how to go about doing that yet. So, are there plans for more and more and more training in that area and sharing of scales? So, if somebody develops one, would they be willing to put it on our website or somewhere, so somebody could look at it, so that when they're doing it, they've got those good models to base it on?
Yes, actually, we're working on making a Microsoft team. In Microsoft Teams, we're working on setting it up, so that teachers can share in their grade levels. And so, we do have that. It's being developed, and then September 8th is going to be our next day, where we continue to do professional learning at elementary and at the secondary level, like we did at our February in-service.
Will there be anything offered through the summer? I know teachers are off, but will there be things, if they want to come, they could?
Yes. We currently have reading symposium that we're, that we're advertising for, and we have a SPED summit, and we have quite a few things.
Okay, great. And the last thing, and you brought this up in your presentation, Otis has been a bit of a problem for us. And it's my understanding that you're going to use Synergy at the middle school level instead of Otis, is that correct? And have you looked at, would Synergy be better at elementary than Otis? I don't know the answers to that, I'm just asking, is that something you've been questioning?
So, we're using Synergy at pre-K as well. So, our kinder through fifth grade, right now, what we're doing is we're setting up a demo, so that we can really see if that is something that would be easier, because that would be the, that would be the question, is, is it easier?
Yeah, yeah, because I'm not anxious to change our teachers when they've learned Otis to something else, if it's not a whole lot better. So, I'm glad you're checking that out. And I personally believe this is the right thing to do for our kids. And I hear full well, it's been a difficult process, but I think it's the right thing to do for our kids. And at this time, I really would just like to thank the teachers, whoever's listening and have insomnia at night, like, because we know that this has been rough, but it has been rough for all of us to try to balance it and not stop, because I know another thing that teachers hate is for us to start something and then stop it, and then start something else and stop and start. So, what I'm saying is, I know that it's difficult. I don't know who I'm looking at, is it TV over here? Hey, teachers. I know that it is difficult at this time for us to, I mean, we know that it's gotten a little better, but we still have work to do to continue to make it right. So, we will continue to listen, we will continue to adjust, and any feedback that you have, I know you've all been giving it, because I've got some emails as well, and then we forward them on, and I know that we make those adjustments, and we will continue to do that until we make it right, not only for the kids, but also what's right for you, because we can't do this work, and the kids can't learn without you, and we know we need you. So, if you can hang in there with us and keep giving the feedback, we will continue to adjust, and we will get this right, and we will have a win-win on all sides. So, again, thank you, teachers, for everything that you're doing. I echo that, yes, thank you. Great presentation, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We will look forward to the next time. Thank you. Next item, Mike?